And we are live.
Good afternoon, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the regular meeting of the East Hampton Town Board. Today is January 6th. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Lees.
Present.
Councilwoman Overby.
Here.
Councilwoman Rogers.
Present.
Supervisor Van Skoyak.
Present. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united states, liberty and justice for all. Today, we have three public hearings followed by a public portion where any member of the public can call in and address the board on any matter. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. But before we get started with the public hearings, we have our town historian Hugh King here today with us. And congratulations, Hugh, on being named Man of the Year for 2021. They couldn't have chosen a better person.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm now the Person of the Year. Okay, now you have to, I'm getting a little nervous because they named an alley after me and I was the grand marshal of the parade, the village parade, and now this. It almost sounds like an obituary.
No, no. Things come in threes.
Okay, that's it then, okay? Because I'm staying here next year. I'm gonna be here. Okay.
Good.
First of all, I've been, Zach Studenroth contacted me about the cemeteries, Councilman Lees.
Yes, good. Thank you.
Thank you. He wants to be taken to Ned's grave site, and I want to take him there. Do we have to call the people up first before we go there?
Contact me and I will make the outreach and I will go there with you.
Oh, good. Okay, so I will contact you and you have his email and the contact information, right?
That's Zach's, but yeah, the contact for the property owner, yes.
And you have Zach's too, right?
Correct, I have Zach's, yes.
Okay, so we'll all go together there one day, okay?
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
He's keeping me apprised of what's going on, and I said I'd be willing to help, okay?
I appreciate that. It's a great project. It's a foundational project for greater conservation and restoration of our colonial grave sites.
Yeah, okay, good. I don't know if Joanne Pilgrim has spread around. I found an article in Newsday about Up the Island. In one of the communities, they're putting up markers to denote Montaukets, the Montauket Native Peoples, and where they lived. Does anybody remember getting that?
Yes, Hugh, and I have some suggestions. We'll make sure that the rest of the board has it. I think Joanne had mentioned it to me.
Yeah.
That she had received an email from you.
Yeah, well, before we do anything, I think we need to contact members of the Montaukets to see if they're interested in doing this. What do you think?
I can certainly outreach to Bob Pharoah and others and see what they think, Jim Devone, whoever else is around. You know, I know that when we talked recently about the hospital emergency satellite department over at Pantago, as part of the necessary review of the project, some preliminary archaeological work was done on the Ballfield Site itself to ensure that there weren't any artifacts there, being that it's about 600, 700 feet away from a known former burial site of the Montaukets at the end of Maple Lane. And I thought that might be a good location for a marker describing the history of that cemetery.
Yep, yep.
The Pomeroy Foundation has historical markers that they give grants for as well, so.
And maybe we could find out if there are any other markers around in the town of East Hampton too. So I'll be willing to work on this and so it may be, wasn't there a committee when you worked on the George Fowler place?
Yes, the Friends of Fowler House, that group worked directly with the town. And I was involved myself with the restoration of that property. So I have the contacts for all those folks and we'd be very happy to reach out to them. It sounds like a great project.
Just to add on one, I've worked with the Pomeroy Foundation for one of the historical markers, for the lifesaving station. The historical markers originally were installed in 1935 by the Department of Education. As far, they were supposed to be, they were out there to display information, almost like a billboard. I do know where they are all located in the town of East Hampton. The Highway Department has helped us restore some of them. Scott Fithian did the same in the village. And I do know that Rick Whalen actually has a listing of all of them. So I can reach out to him and we can work on this all together.
All righty. Because certainly where Stephen Pharoah is buried on, oh, I don't know how that Pocahontas Path ever got its name. I don't know where that's come from, but okay. All right, so, good.
I think there was a Pocahontas Pharaoh, actually.
There was. I don't know what this road, the street is named after her or not. Okay. All right, so you're all agreeing that we're gonna attempt to work on this and this could be a project for this year, okay?
Sounds like a great project.
Well, now, along with that, now it's time for an assignment, okay? Have you told Councilwoman Rogers about this?
No, we were gonna break her in easily. It's just easier.
Mr. King, your part of, your appearances at the town board meetings and your questions have always been my favorite part of the meeting. So I'm happy to be on this side of it and participate.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Okay, well, I think I'm gonna, I'd like to assign everybody a person to find two or three things about. Unfortunately, when we're discussing Montaukets and their history, lots of it wasn't written by the Montaukets. It was written by others. We are fortunate that Doctors Gaynell Stone and John Strong have researched and written extensively about them. So I'm going to give the most difficult one, of course, to Councilwoman Gonzalez. But I have help. Your person that we'd like you to find out about is, her name was Quashawan.
You're gonna have to spell that for me.
I think it's Q-U-A-S-H-A-W-A-N. And I have the research place where you can find out about her. It's a Long Island Historical Journal that I'll drop off at Town Hall for you.
Okay, great.
Okay? Because if you go online, you're not gonna find the real story. You'll find it here. Okay, so, okay. Councilman Lees, why don't you do, why don't you do Sampson Occum? He was not a Montauket, but he worked in Montauk.
Occum with an A?
O-C-C-U-M. I think it's O-C-C-U-M, Occum.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilwomen Overby and Rogers, Councilwoman Overby, why don't you do George Fowler?
Okay.
And Councilwoman Rogers, you could do Stephen Pharoah.
Thank you, I will.
Who turned out to be Stephen Torkhouse. And then Supervisor Van Skoyak, you could find out how the word Montauk is spelled. No, no, no.
There's actually several different spellings of it that I run across.
Why don't you do Wyandance?
Wyandance, okay.
Now, remember, we don't have to have a whole biography and we have to be careful of what we say. And what I'm going to do, my assignment is going to be to find five statements about the Montaukets that are not true. Okay? That's my job next time. So I will come up with five facts or statements about the Montaukets that are not true. All right?
Great.
Okay, that's it. Oh, wait a minute, one more thing. Sometime this year, you're going to have to start thinking about 2023, which is the 375th anniversary of the founding of the town by the English. Remember, the Montaukets were here already, so we were second. But whatever kind of ceremony or festivities we're gonna have, probably a good idea to start thinking about it this year. Okay?
Right.
Thanks for putting that on our radar, Hugh. Well, thanks so much for joining us today. Congratulations on your Person of the Year designation.
Yeah, I have to go out and sign some autographs now, Person of the Year.
If you're by Town Hall, please stop in.
I have to go by Town Hall. Councilwoman Gonzalez has to have her thing, all right? Bye-bye.
You've got the tough one.
Yep.
Okay, I guess we can proceed now with the meeting. Carol, if you read the first public hearing notice and the COVID disclaimer.
I'll read the COVID disclosure for all three. Please note that due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, the Town Board is not expected to meet in person at the time of this hearing. Pursuant to New York law, Chapter 417 of the laws of 2021, Part E, which authorizes notwithstanding the provisions of Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the contrary, political subdivisions, to permit any public body to hold meetings remotely without the public in-person access by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. This public hearing in the Town Board can be held via video conferencing with a transcript provided at a later date pursuant to such authority. The public can watch the public hearing live on local TV Channel 22 and live online from the public meetings link on the LTV website. If any interested members of the public would like to provide comments on this matter and the financing thereof, comments can be called in during the meeting. The conference number for such purpose is 351-888-6331. Written comments and/or questions may also be submitted via email to the town clerk at the following email address, Said comments and/or questions will be considered at the public hearing, provided that they are submitted by email no later than 9:00 a.m. on the day the public hearing are submitted via telephone by way of the conference number. The transcript will be prepared of the public hearing and a copy shall be filed with the town clerk and placed upon the town's website. And additional comments will be accepted in writing by the town clerk by email to c.brennan@ehamptonny.gov or by mail to the town clerk, 159 Pantago Road, East Hampton, New York, provided the same or received within one week of the posting of the public hearing transcript. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for further instructions for any changes to the instructions to access the public hearing and for updated information. Notice is hereby given. The Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 6th at 2:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider comments of all persons regarding the following. Sale of town-owned property at 54 Industrial Road in Waynescott, Town of East Hampton, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 300, 192, 339, thereafter referred to as the premises to the tenant, pursuant to the terms of the option to purchase fee title rider to the lease agreement between the town and the tenant, Industrial Road Associates. Pursuant to the option to purchase fee title rider, the town and the tenant have agreed upon a purchase price based upon the town's appraisal at $1,665,000. As the town's industrial park is located within the boundaries of the town's municipal airport, provisions of Town Code Chapter 75 Airport apply, and the airport master plan must be amended to exclude the premises. Such action is a Type 1 action pursuant to Chapter 75, and a full environmental assessment form has been prepared to analyze the potential impacts of the sale of the premises, and the Town Board has adopted a negative determination with regard to same.
Thank you, Carol. John, could you give us just a brief introduction for the benefit of the public?
Sure. Basically, this was an option exercised by a tenant pursuant to their lease that allows them to purchase the property at the value at the time the option is exercised. We obtained an appraisal of the property and the tenant agreed to pay the appraised value. Under our code, since the industrial park is technically still a part of the airport, it's included in the airport layout plan, which is basically just a master map of the whole airport premises. And so in order to transfer this property, it needs to be removed from the airport layout plan. And under the Town Code's provisions in Chapter 75, removal or any change to the airport layout plan is a Type 1 action under SECRE. So we had a full environmental assessment prepared by our planning department. You may recall in an earlier work session, we had somebody from the planning department come over and review the environmental assessment with the Town Board, and the Town Board was satisfied with the assessment. The assessment deemed the change to the airport layout plan to be a, not to have any significant adverse environmental impacts, because basically, the only thing that changes here is that the property is carved out of the airport layout plan. The use of the property doesn't change. Nothing really changes otherwise. The zoning doesn't change. It's just this one change to the airport layout plan to take this parcel out of the, you know, airport map that resulted in the need to have the hearing. So that's really it for us to authorize the sale. We would have to have, we'll have a subsequent resolution of the Town Board that will also be subject to permissive referendum. That's under the state statutes for transfer of real property from a town. And at that point, we can proceed if there's no challenge to the authorization by way of a referendum.
Thank you, John. Jason, do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, we do. I shall unmute the first one. I don't know which hearing that they're in, that they're calling for right now, but I'll, as we unmute, I'll take notes.
Thank you.
Okay. Hello caller ending 6388. You're on the air. Hello? Hello caller ending 6388. Okay, I'm moving on to the next caller. Hello caller ending 2866. You're on the air. Hello? Oh, wait, one second. Sorry about this. Someone was muted. I apologize. Hello, caller, you're on the air.
Hi, yes, I'm sorry. Actually, the last caller, we were able to hear them. You weren't.
Yes, that was a muted, yes, I'll go back to them right now. Thank you very much.
No problem. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. There's a technical problem, but it's all sorted. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Town Board and Supervisor. I'm calling about the airport, not particularly about this parcel, but the airport in general. So I, I put in the comments now.
No, I'd appreciate it if you would make the comments. I'd appreciate it if you'd hold those comments until after the public hearings and we get to the public portion.
Okay, so there was no way for us to tell how we could, you know, do that, so.
Understand. So we'll just, we'll make a note.
I'll hold my comments and hope that I will be the first one up then, because I have another Zoom meeting following this, so.
So Jason, if you please, please note the caller's number and we'll go to them first in the public portion.
Understood. Thank you very much. That has been noted. I'm muting next caller. Hello caller ending 2866. Thank you.
Yes, I'm, thank you. I'm also calling about something that's not part of the public hearing. Do you want me to just hold off until you're ready?
Yeah, 100%. I'll make sure that you're noted on that one too.
I'll stay on.
Thank you. Just taking some notes and trying to make sure everyone's in order here. Moving on to the next caller. Hello caller ending 2617. You're on the air.
Hi, good afternoon, Peter and Board. This is John Crane. I was in transition there, trying to take my phone off mute. Are you asking for airport comments to be held till later in the meeting?
Yes.
Just any comments not associated with the hearings. Yes, we'll take those at the later portion of the public comment.
Okay, and just for my own clarification, when you say for the hearings pertaining to...
The hearing that we are on right now pertains to the sale of a piece of property on Industrial Road.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Peter. I'll hold my comments then till later in the meeting.
Okay, thanks for calling. We'll look forward to hearing from you later.
Okay, I'm muting next caller.
I'll hold my comments then till later.
Oh, pardon me, caller. Could you mute your TV in the background?
We'll look forward to hearing from you later. Okay, I'm muting next caller.
Uh, pardon me, caller 1728. You're, can you mute the call?
Pardon me, caller. Could you mute your TV in the background?
Okay, I'm gonna go move on. It's just, it doesn't seem like anyone's at the phone. Okay, caller ending 0071. You're on the air. Hello?
Yeah, hi. I'll defer until the public portion.
Okay, thank you. And... Hello caller ending 3653. You're on the air.
Thank you. I'm Gary Brad Herring, speaking on behalf of the 54 Industrial Road Proposal. Good afternoon, Board members, and thank you for allowing me to briefly speak. I am a 33-year resident of Amagansett and built my business, Industrial Road Associates, here. First in a rental building in East Hampton Village, and then 28 years ago, secured the lease on 54 Industrial Road, and then proceeded to build the office and the warehouse that is there now. Our lease includes an option to purchase, which we have exercised. We have very much enjoyed being a tenant of the town and look forward to acquiring the land. Thank you very much for your consideration today.
Thank you for calling in.
Okay, and I have one more person to unmute. I just wanna go double check and make that person that, whose TV was just on.
Calling in.
Hello, caller?
Okay, and I have one more person to unmute. I just wanna go...
Okay, and I'm gonna go on to our other caller here. Hello caller ending 5449. You're on the air. Hello? Hello caller ending 5449. I'm gonna try to unmute one more time to make sure that everything's working.
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you very much, sir. You're on the air.
Am I put into the queue now?
Yes, you're on the air.
Do you wish to comment on the 54 Industrial Road public hearing? Or would you like to comment in general public comments?
Um, I believe they just hung up for, they're no longer on the line with us.
Do you have any other callers that you haven't spoken to yet?
I'm just double checking that right now. No, the only other, the only caller that I haven't double checked is that person who just wasn't at the phone and their TV was on in the background. I wasn't able to reach them.
Okay, you tried with them several times.
One more time for good measure?
Okay, fine.
Okay, caller 1728. You're on the air. Hello?
Thank you very much. It's Patricia Curry. I would like to comment during the public portion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patricia.
Thank you, Patricia. We'll get back to you shortly.
1728, you're on the air. Hello?
And if you can mute your TV in the background, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, aside from that, we have...
At this point?
Yes.
Unless anyone else has called in, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass to Carrie. Carol, if you'd read the next hearing notice, please.
Pursuant to Section 247 of General Municipal Law and the Chapter 16 of the Town Code, the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 6th, 2:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as the same may be heard to hear comments of all persons wishing to be heard concerning the filing grant to scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grantor is Karen Minor Romanoff, as trustee of the Karen Minor Romanoff Living Trust. It's a scenic and conservation easement dated November 11, 2021. The location is 42 Hedges Bank Drive in East Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map 33525, and the reviewing agency is the ZBN.
Thank you, Carol. Jason, do you have any new callers on the line?
I have no new callers on the line.
I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass to Carrie. Carol, if you'd read the next hearing notice.
Notice is hereby given. The Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on January 6th at 2:00 p.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider comments of all persons regarding an amendment to Town Code to read as follows. Be it enacted that the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton as follows. Town Code Amendment, Chapter 37, Department Head Bonus Compensation Program, Section 37.2, Eligible and Eligible Department Heads, Paragraph A is hereby amended. Add the following: Principal Accountant, the effective date of this local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State as required by law.
Thank you. Do you have any new callers on the line, Jason?
I have one caller that called back just now. I just wanna double check with them. Hello caller ending 3653. You're on the air.
Hugh.
Hello caller ending 3653. You're on the air. I don't, I'm not hearing anything.
Okay.
Let's just make, I'm just double checking to make absolutely sure. I don't see any new callers who are not waiting for public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass to Carrie. Okay, that brings us up to the public comment. Portion of the meeting, where any member of the public may address the board on any topic. Again, we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. And please mute any TV or computer you may be watching the meeting on in the background when you get on the phone line.
All right. I'm muting that first caller. Hello caller ending...
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Supervisor and Board Members. I wanted to wish you a healthy and safe New Year, first of all, and thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment. My name is Cheryl Gold. I'm a property owner and resident for 36 years at 54 Wireless Road. As one who experiences at very low altitudes the approach of all types of aircraft, mostly large jets, and who is committed to mitigating climate change by eliminating its primary cause, fossil fuels, I have appeared before the Town Board many times over the years, pleading for relief, requesting environmental testing, recommending alternative uses of the 600 acres, calling out the hypocrisy of the Board's climate crisis declaration, and advocating for full and permanent closure of the town-owned airport. I'm here today to convey my disappointment and dissatisfaction with this Board's decision to temporarily close and shortly thereafter reopen the airport with meaningless curfews and restrictions. Your statement this week for the need to balance the needs of the entire community is yet another example of obfuscation. Why should the needs of the residents, whose quality of life, health, and public safety have been compromised, be balanced with others' needs? And just who are the others? Montauk was a red herring. Everyone knows that the diversion study was a worst-case scenario, but was used by the town to placate the fear mongering emanating from a hamlet that hasn't suffered over the decades while others have. Does the balance include the needs of aviation interests and the convenience of the 1%? Or does the balance have to do with Montauk versus Waynescott, the hamlet that has already suffered serious water contamination? Just whose needs need to be balanced here? The misinformation, misleading statements, omissions, and lack of transparency is unworthy of officials who have been elected to represent the needs and concerns of the people who live and work here. The so-called re-envisioning process that has been lauded by the Board left a lot to be desired, especially... be desired, especially the public workshops that were flawed from the outset. At a recent town board meeting, it was stated that participants in the public workshops had the opportunity to express all their opinions. Nothing could be further than the truth. There was never an opportunity to discuss alternative uses, even though residents were assured for months that alternative uses would be solicited and considered. Residents were misled, intentionally or not, by the term re-envisioning as including uses other than an airport. The most recent lack of transparency is the town's refusal to provide a breakdown of expenditures for the consultant studies. According to records, roughly $400,000 was paid to Cooley in 2021 through December 6th. The public is entitled to know how much each consultant received for their work that was supposed to be used to inform policy decisions about the future of the airport property. My public records request was denied because it would be a violation of attorney-client privilege. Those of us who have engaged for years to help solve the intolerable effects of the town-owned airport have lost confidence that you are willing to make the difficult decisions to protect the residents and the environment. Please prove us wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Cheryl. Can we go to the next caller, please?
Absolutely. Hello caller ending 2866, you are on the air.
Is there any way you, is there any way you can come right back to me? I'm just looking at my dog at the vet. I need like one minute, I'm so sorry.
Completely understood, yeah. Um, moving on to next caller that we had in the queue. Okay, uh, hello caller ending 2617, you are on the air. Hello caller ending 2617, you are on the air. Okay, I'll circle back to that person. And let's go to the other person for public comment. Hello caller 0071, you're on the air.
Hi, this is Tom Ogden of Wayne Scott. Um, I wanted to make a comment with regard to the airport, and I'd like to start with an observation of my own, and then, uh, a suggestion for the board. Throughout the late fall into December, the chopper, chopper traffic continued into and out of KHTO, uh, especially of course on Fridays and Sundays. I made a point, uh, as often as I could, looking, uh, at those times when the choppers were coming over, at the, uh, time to, uh, drive from the airport into, uh, the city, particularly the Upper East Side, which is probably the, uh, destination of choice for a lot of the chopper users. Uh, and at the same time, look at the time to drive to the obscure, uh, and, uh, outpost known as the Montauk Airport. And what I found over and over and over was that traffic into the city, uh, was, uh, by car, was light at around two and a half hours, and, uh, the drive up to, uh, Montauk was never less than 45 minutes. So my point is that when you take those numbers, there's no question that were the KHTO to be closed, no one, no one would choose to drive 45 minutes in the wrong directions and add 15 minutes to their flight time and end up, uh, thereby throwing away an hour and in total at best saving 15 or maybe 30 minutes on the travel into, as against, uh, traveling by car for two and a half hours. That's the observation. The suggestion is that the town expand the diversion study that was done and make it a meaningful analysis of traffic patterns, uh, the kind of driving numbers that I've talked about as, uh, the year goes forward with respect to various dates and times in order to see just, and I believe end up demonstrating, that the concerns about substantial diversion to, uh, the Montauk Airport are a complete red herring and a complete, uh, fear-mongering tactic that needs to be put to rest. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Tom.
Moving on to next caller. Hello caller, could you mute the TV in the background?
You're calling, Tom. Moving on to the next caller.
Caller 1726, could you mute your TV in the back, oh, sorry, 1728, can you mute your TV in the background?
You're calling, Tom. Moving on to the next caller.
Can we go to the next caller, please?
Yeah, yes, I'll, I'll go to the next caller. Um, let me just-
For those, for those who are listening, please, before you get on the line there, just, uh, turn off, turn off your, um, TV or whatever device you're listening to the meeting so we don't get that feedback.
Understood. Um, gonna go on to, I'm gonna go circle back to that, uh, earlier caller, um, who was at the vet. Hello caller 2866, this is-
Thank you, third time is a charm. Uh, thanks for your patience. This is Jackie S. Vito from Springs. Um, I am calling about the cow. Um, I don't know if the board is aware, but Maidstone Park Beach is a scenic area of statewide significance in New York. Um, this is something I was not aware of. Uh, we've heard from community members, uh, who are concerned about it, uh, who also are concerned that the, the property was actually given to the town with the requirement that it always remain a park, um, and cannot be used for other purposes. Wanted to bring this to the board's attention. I mean, we, we certainly feel a certain, uh, level of responsibility for this thing to be placed in the most appropriate place for our entire community in Springs, um, and, you know, take some responsibility for, for the role we have played in, in where it is, is located, uh, and want to make sure that it's not located in a park, um, and that could potentially jeopardize its use for our entire community. Um, I know also the Springs CAC, I believe from the last meeting, we heard from, uh, Kathy Burke Gonzalez, that several of the Springs CAC members had, in fact, um, I think the majority of those who had responded had called for it to go to Gan Road. Um, I know that, that's a possibility. I understand there may potentially be elevation issues there. I don't know how, how real those are, I haven't seen any data. Um, and certainly we know that the firehouse in Springs has, um, as late as this summer, called once again for the cow to be at the firehouse, and I believe, although I'm not positive, at 88 feet, I don't think that that cow would be in the double fall zone of any home, uh, at, at the firehouse. So that, you know, could be an option, and there's no legal requirement that, um, you know, that, that it be on town-owned land. It absolutely could be on private land. The, the, uh, the thinking that you don't need an environmental review of town land is actually not true, right? We know that the Monroe test would apply. We know that the board, um, can't on its own decide that the town cone does not apply. So, um, it seems like the firehouse or Gan Road would both be viable options and just encourage the board to take another look. And before moving forward with Maidstone, um, obviously taking into consideration that this is an area of, uh, scenic statewide significance, um, and there are, you know, very serious concerns about whether or not this could impact, um, the, the transfer of the property to the town, uh, way back when. So that, that's all, um, and hoping that this information can be, uh, addressed.
Thanks for sharing your opinions, Jackie. Can we go to the next caller, please?
Absolutely. Hello caller ending nine, uh, let me just go try to unmute this one more time. Hello caller ending 9525, you are on the air.
Hi, John Cullen calling from Northville, over on the North Fork. Uh, first of all, happy new year to the board, and welcome Councilwoman Kate Rogers. Uh, I'm calling about the curfews over at the airport. Uh, just this past Sunday, at 10:27 PM, I had a plane coming over my house from Westchester at 271 knots, heading to your airport, and I got out of bed and I made my complaint by calling in, and on my message I said, "Please ask this pilot to go another way on the way home." So sure enough, at 10:46, the same plane at another 270 knots goes right over my house, and I would be more than happy to share a snapshot that I took. It's a straight line in and a straight line out from Westchester that goes right over the North Fork, which is something that, uh, I believe the East Hampton Community Alliance says doesn't happen, uh, as far as aircrafts coming to your HTO, uh, through the North Fork Zone, the red zone, which I have seen pictures of. Uh, as far as the curfews go, it's, it's, uh, it just has not been treated correctly over the years, and I'm not sure what the future brings for us. But, uh, I would think that if anybody made these phone calls, these operators that are going over homes at 270 knots at 10:30 at night and being given a call the following day, I'm sure that forgiveness instead of permission is the usual answer and the usual request. Uh, and I'd like to just pass that on. I, I did hear Cheryl Gold speak earlier, and I agree with what Cheryl had to say, and thank you for your time, and welcome Kate Rogers again.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for calling, John, and I'll just say that, you know, up until now, all curfews have been voluntary, so there's no enforcement mechanism that the town had during the period of time that the FAA grant assurances are in place. Uh, if, if and when we do institute curfews, uh, at the airport, they will be enforceable and will have consequences that will be a deterrent from people violating them.
Uh, now, would that be something like, uh, Southampton Meadow Lane where ob, obviously they have no lights on that, uh, little pad they have there? Would you be turning on your lights for anybody that decides to come in after your curfew time? Or will they just come in and then they'll be given a phone call?
So the, so the exact procedure hasn't, I, the exact procedure hasn't been decided upon, but the town board has a number of options, including having a severe fine, uh, banning the, the, uh, aviator from the airport for future landings, landings. There are significant consequences that could be put in place.
Fabulous supervisor, thank you very much for your comments. Have a good day, all.
Thank you, you too, and happy new year.
Thank you.
Can we go to the next caller, please?
Absolutely. Let me just make sure. Okay, caller 5449, you're on the air.
Hi, uh, this is, uh, Barry Frankel, uh, I think the board knows me, I'm on the WCAC Board. Um, I just wanted to talk about the airport briefly. Um, I listened to Cheryl's, uh, comments and the others. Um, I think three points have to be taken into account when one thinks about the future of the airport. Number one, I think that the sessions that were held in the various hamlets were important, but they were seriously flawed in terms of developing a consensus forecast of the opinion of the community. These are more like focus panels than they are market research, and they should have been used, I think, more for, uh, um, ideation as opposed to forecasting. I can talk to you more about this in more length, so I don't think that was correct. Um, I think I agree that the diversion issue to Montauk Airport is one that was a red herring. I think the diversion study is not well-understood by those outside of the, in the community, and I think that any, any diversion can be easily managed through various actions the board can take at this private airport. And I bring to the more fundamental issue, which is balancing the needs. The comment I think that, um, that Cheryl also made, um, just because the hamlet of Wayne Scott is the smallest hamlet, doesn't mean that it is the least impacted in terms of the number of people by the impact of noise and potential pollution. And it also does not take into account all the other surrounding communities that are not in East Hampton, such as Sagaponix and on the North Fork that are impacted. Um, to me, this is a clear, um, decision that should be taken into account, that the airport needs to be either severely curtailed or wound down, and that much other uses more affected to the economy of East Hampton can be made. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Barry, and happy new year.
Okay.
Thank you, happy new year to you.
All right, unmuting next caller. Hello caller 1484, you're on the air.
Yes, um, my name's Adam Irving, uh, I live out in Orient at the, uh, eastern end of the North Fork. Um, certainly feels a long way from East Hampton, but by air, unfortunately, I'm kind of a neighbor to you guys. Um, as such, I've been involved in the, uh, aviation noise issue for about 10 years out here. Um, South Old Town has been very clear, uh, you know, we don't, we don't want the Hamptons-bound, uh, air traffic noise, we don't want the pollution. We've seen over-land strategies that have not worked, um, we've also seen over-water strategies that have not worked. Um, the bottom line is routes, curfews, and other kind of topical attempts to fix the situation, they're just not gonna work. Um, somebody always gets the noise, somebody always gets the pollution, and for many years, it's been the North Fork. Um, I'd also like to talk a little bit about the, the notion of curfews. Um, the bottom line is, unless that curfew is, you know, 3:00 in the afternoon, I, I really don't see how this is gonna placate the noise impacted. Um, the bottom line is, you know, people work hard, they get home on a Thursday or a Friday, you know, between the hour, most of the helicopters tend to come rolling through here, uh, between 4:00 and about 6:30, and as far as I'm concerned, that's the most important time in any family's week. You know, that's when people are hanging out with their kids, they're hanging out with their significant others, their friends. The last thing that anybody wants is 20, 30, 40 twin-engine helicopters buzzing by, doesn't matter whether they're overhead, 3 miles away, out here where I am, you're gonna hear them for 2, 3 minutes per flyby. Um, and I, and I really, really think that needs to be taken into consideration from just kind of a good neighbor standpoint. Um, to me, this whole situation is a lot like when New York City had to make the tough decision to ban smoking back, uh, I guess that was in the early 2000s. Um, you know, there were howls, just howls from the industry lobbyists that this was gonna kill the bars, it's gonna kill the restaurants. You know, COVID aside, I would say that New York restaurants and bars have done quite well. Um, I think East Hampton's gonna be in the exact same situation. It's, you know, you guys have an extremely desirable location, uh, some of the best beaches on the East End. Um, I would, I would implore you to make the tough decision, as New York City did, and put a, put a permanent end to this problem. Um, I just don't see any topical attempts to fix it as working. I've been at this a long time. Um, so please make the tough call, close the airport. Uh, it's really the only long-term solution, and tens of thousands of negatively impacted residents from Manhattan, Jersey City, all the way to the East End of both Forks will be forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Adam.
All right, unmuting next caller. Uh, caller ending 8764, you're on the air.
Good afternoon, town board, and happy new year. It's David Buddha. I'd like to make a couple of quick points, um, since you have a long meeting and it's late in the afternoon, and that brings up point number one. I'd like to encourage you, so long as, um, there are no, there is no return to normalcy currently in short view, uh, I would like you to consider moving your regular meeting to an evening time. Uh, I think that your participation would be enhanced, I think that the ability of people who work during the day and can't take the luxury of participating via, uh, virtually during the daytime because of work obligations, they would be, uh, certainly able to better participate in public government. That's number one. Number two, um, I applaud the town's, the board's focus on, on housing for, uh, the future, and particularly in the short term, um, I think you call it all hands on deck or something to that effect. Um, but one thing I'd like to point out is, one of your major projects that will be coming in the near future is 395 Patago Road, the half of it that will be devoted to affordable housing that was purchased not with CPF funds. Somehow, along the way, the notion has arisen and seems to be consolidated and, and firming up that you will not be building rental housing there, or allowing rental housing to be the, the mode of operation. Um, it seems to me that if you're serious about dealing with rental, with the housing needs for the community, for younger people, for workers, et cetera, the only real viable way to go is with a rental housing approach. The condominiums that you built on, uh, Aquabonic Road, obviously, you've worked through all the problems, but it was a long and tedious process, but it's really not a very densely, not a lot of units that were able to be produced on that property, and in the past, the single-family model of, uh, affordable housing has also come up to just prove that in this- prove that in this town, because of rising values, it becomes problematic to maintain those properties in the affordable housing scheme. And it frankly sucks a lot of money out of the town budget to maintain them when they turn over. The third point I'd like to raise is something that I think it was Councilwoman Bert Gonzalez, the other day, was having a conversation about calling for the appropriate town officials to prepare an inventory of how many innovative alternative septic systems have been actually funded and how many have been installed. And I would, I'm very much looking forward to that. But one thing that I've become concerned about, because I've obviously watched the whole process of the town creating the funding mechanism to support the installation of upgraded septic systems with alternative innovative systems, one of the things that was always understood, and frankly, now that the money is coming not from the town budget but from the CPF budget, one thing that must always be remembered is that the definition of a water quality improvement project that is eligible to be funded using CPF funds, using that 20% set aside, specifically says in the statutes that such projects shall have as their purpose the improvement of existing water quality to meet existing specific water quality standards. And here is the next line, which is the most important to me. "Projects which have as a purpose to permit or accommodate new growth shall not be included within this definition." I think at times perhaps, I'm afraid, we're losing sight of that. I see new septic systems going in where four-bedroom houses are being turned into five and six-bedroom houses, and I have to wonder whether or not those septic systems are being funded by the town's CPF money. If they are, it's not appropriate, for the same reason that you don't fund new construction, septic systems, et cetera. All right, those are my three points for today. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you, David. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
All right, next caller. Hello, caller ending, oh, one second. Hello, caller ending 0299, you're on the air. Hello. Hello, caller ending 0299, you're on the air. Hello.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yeah.
Hello. Thank you very much. This is Carolyn Logan-Glock, calling from Wayne Scott. As you know, I'm serving as chair of the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee. And we wrote to you back in September regarding the airport. Many people have asked me whether we've taken a stand. And so I thought it would be worthwhile to read into the record the letter that we wrote to you back then, even though in parts it might seem dated with your understanding. The Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee and members of the community thanked the Town Board for the numerous studies commissioned regarding the East Hampton Airport. These have been invaluable in formulating an informed point of view regarding the future of the airport. In addition, input from the surrounding communities affected by the airport has also been of great value in demonstrating a broad consensus. From this data and pan-community discussions, the WCAC by a vote of 9 to 1 recommends the following as a reflection of the consensus of the Wayne Scott community and position cognizant of the broader East Hampton and Southampton communities. The WCAC supports the closing of the airport as it negatively impacts residents throughout the area. Noise, pollution, public safety, and responsible environmental stewardship, all issues that have been addressed in studies, support this recommendation. While full closure is preferred at a minimum, helicopters, jets, sea planes, and other similar modes of transport, current or future, including drones, should not be permitted to land at KHTO under any circumstances other than medical emergencies or storm evacuation and resupply. If the airport were to be reopened for hobbyists flying small planes, such should be allowed only if abgas were not sold. And any changes regarding usage proposed by future administration would be subject to public referendum prior to implementation. Potential impacts from the diversion of air traffic to other airports have also been closely considered. The WCAC has weighed these against the overall benefits offered by our recommended course of action. Specifically, the external consultants preliminary report of a capacity diversion estimates overstated significantly the actual diversion based on a 40% of KHTO travelers transporting to Southampton and unlikely to use Montauk Airport, inadequate facilities for broad consistent use by larger passenger-carrying aircraft, and alternative modes of land transport. As such, the committee expects the town and airport owners can and will work together effectively to mitigate negative impacts by pursuing an East Hampton-wide agreement, taking into account Montauk Airport. While the private ownership nature of that airport may present some challenges, we expect the town will identify a combination of regulations, incentives, and/or structural changes. We reiterate, these recommendations reflect the broad consensus of the Wayne Scott community and, to our understanding, reflect a similar broad consensus of the town and neighboring communities. In our history as a CAC, we have never seen a broader, deeper sense of alarm as that generated by the KHTO airport operations and their impact on our quality of life. And I thank you once again for your consideration of our recommendation now, early in 2022. Thank you so much, and Happy New Year to all on the Town Board.
Thank you for calling, Carolyn, and Happy New Years to you. And I'll just say that the Town Board is striving to reach the goals that you state, short of closure. And if we can't, if we can't get to that point, then closure is still an option.
Thank you so much.
And I'll go on to the next caller. Hello, caller from a restricted number. You're on the air. Hello, caller from a restricted number. You are on the air.
Hello?
Yes, hello?
Hello. Hi, it's Patricia Curry calling. I've been waiting a long time.
Oh, you had two numbers on, apparently. You have another one, and I unmuted you a few times, but it was just the TV was on in the background.
No, the sound is off on the television. I've been listening on the telephone. May I speak?
Yes, you're on the air.
Welcome, Patricia.
Thank you very much, Peter. Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. As you know, I'm a NOAC resident, and like many in East Hampton and neighboring communities, I'm a victim of noise and pollution from your airport. Supporters of Say No whom I represent, welcome the announcement of your re-envisioning project, believing the studies would inform decisions on the future of the airport, and that there would be ample opportunity for public discussions of other uses that could replace toxic activity, benefit the town budget, and allow safe public access to the property. We're still waiting for that to happen. We believe that your concerns over contamination and irreversible damage to 47 acres at the airport from earlier aviation use of toxic PFOs, and your concern about the well-being of Wayne Scott residents who have been exposed to those forever chemicals through water from their private wells, would make safety the priority for you and the Town Board, and guide your decisions on the future of the property. Not certain that that happened. We applauded the town's declaration as a climate-smart community, believing the guiding principles would lead not only to reduction of fossil fuel use, but to long-lasting solutions to airport pollution. We believe the town would take steps immediately after regaining control of the airport to prevent further damage to the aquifer. One, by closing the fuel farm, which sits at possibly the most perilous location on the entire property, and poses ever-present danger to the safety of our drinking water. And two, to end the sale of dirty aviation fuel at the airport, where over a million gallons were sold through November 2021, 11 months, a million gallons. That is particularly dangerous to the health and development of young children. So we anticipated that, like similar concerned communities located near general aviation airports, the Town Board would ban access to aircraft using leaded fuel. None of this, as far as we know, has happened. We are appalled that the findings of the economic study, which indicated the contribution from airport users to the town's overall economy is tiny, appear to have been given more weight than the safety and health of residents and benefits to the town if the airport were closed. We were dismayed that unproven questionable conclusions from the traffic diversion study were used as red herrings in the run-up to the election. You've heard that one before. And that the town did middle to counter the fear-mongering on that and other false issues regarding the airport. We were also dismayed that residents of a hamlet never impacted by KHTO activity were assured that they would be sheltered from KHTO activity, while East Hampton residents under the Sierra Route were subjected, some along, to intense air traffic not experienced before by most East Hampton residents. We question why the town is now in negotiation with the FAA, the agency you decried for robbing the town of local control when it reneged on an earlier agreement on expiration of grant assurances. The same agency thumbed its nose at the airport manager's recent request to ban dangerous operations under special visual flight rules. Their response was to immediately grant permission for aircraft with no guidance instruments onboard to continue to fly in bad weather and poor visibility at dangerously low altitudes above our homes. That an airport will continue to operate when the town's own consultants describe much of the property as a highly environmentally sensitive location is deeply concerning. We are appalled that the town acceded to demands of those who profit from or use KHTO and whose nonessential flights endanger public safety and health, degrade our environment, threaten our children's future, and erode quality of life across the East End. We do not accept that operating a private airport for 1% is a balanced outcome for the community. Over decades, hundreds of thousands of complaints against the airport have been filed by East Hampton residents and your nearest neighbors. You know full well, the latter have borne the brunt of the abuse. The town cannot now merely place a Band-Aid on a decades-long red-hot fire and expect to extinguish the flames. The rights of New York State residents to clean water, clean air, and a healthy environment are now enshrined in the New York State Constitution. We look forward to learning in an open and transparent process which measures will be put in place to ensure those rights are not violated by continued toxic, nonessential aviation at your private airport. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thanks for calling, Patricia.
All right.
Any other callers on the line?
Yes, we do. We had one caller, we have one new caller and one caller who was previously unresponsive. I'm just going to try that previously unresponsive person one more time. Hello, caller 2617, you're on the air. Hello?
Hi, this is John Corain from the neighboring town of Southampton. I'm just going to read a letter for the record, similar to what Carolyn did earlier. This is a letter from the NOAC Civic Council, dated January 20 of 2021, and it was sent to you, Peter, and copying the board. For over a decade, the hamlet of NOAC and neighboring communities in the town of Southampton have suffered negative impact to our quality of life because of East Hampton Airport. Helicopters, sea planes, prop planes, and an increasing number of large jets fly low over our homes at all hours. Promises to, quote, "fly-friendly" and use, quote, "all water routes" have done nothing to improve the situation. Not even the terrible pandemic has resulted in improvements. It is very troubling to imagine what will happen to the airport operations volumes once we get back to good health. There was more to the letter, but I won't go through it all. You all have it. I think the gist of what I wanted to say today is, my neighbors are somewhat stunned and disappointed with the approach to anything short of closing the airport. We thought that the, all the groups that we participated in, that the economic studies, environmental studies, everything surely pointed to only one answer. And it seemed like an easy answer and a very fair answer, which was repurposing the airport property for the good of the whole East End community. Peter, I appreciate your thoughts that you're going to put in significant restrictions and that the status quo is unacceptable. But I have to tell you, the feedback that I'm getting from others and that I share is that it will not be a solution. It's simply kicking the can down the road. And at every town hall meeting, even after this goes in, you're going to hear callers like myself and others say, "It's not working. It's not working." So I wish you all a happy new year. It's not the way I hoped we'd be starting the new year. I thought we'd be celebrating a great milestone in environmental protection. But I guess we're going to have to wait a little longer for that. But thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I always do appreciate you listening to your neighbors to the west of you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate the call and the comments. And be well and Happy New Year.
And I'm muting next caller. Hello, caller ending 3290, you're on the air. Hello?
Good afternoon, Town Board. This is Tom Bogdan calling from Montauk, New York.
Hello, Tom.
I've been listening to all that's been said and the callers that have been calling in. And in terms of their plight and their problem, all of Montauk absolutely agrees with that. We have no intention to disprove any of those problems. They're horrendous. They're horrible, and no one should have to put up with them. However, Montauk is not a red herring. I repeat, Montauk is not a red herring. In October of this year, over 550 people raised their hands at a Montauk townwide meeting to say that they led, their homes would be negatively affected if the East Hampton Airport closed. We, at that particular meeting, representatives from at least four different airlines talked and told us that they would use Montauk as one of their primary alternates if the East Hampton Airport closes. Now, I understand, and I realize, all of Montauk understands and realizes the spot the Town Board's in. They have to come up with an answer. And we also believe of their integrity in wanting to do the right thing. However, we are not a red herring. It has been proven the amount of economic and social damage to Montauk goes without question. It's there, and it will happen. Now, what we ask you to do is, as in the article of your choices in the paper today regarding a temporary closure, we understand that, and perhaps there's a way out using that particular approach. However, we implore you to keep Montauk in mind as the damage that will, and no doubt, happen to it if full closure and permanent closure occurs. Even during a temporary closure, Montauk will be forced to bear the problem of being the only airport in East Hampton and the negative results that happen. Please, when you come up with this plan, share it with us all. Have a plan, have a motive, and at least can tell us how long this temporary closure would last and what you're going to do with it when it's over. Let's hear your plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for calling, Tom, and Happy New Year.
Okay, so we don't have, all of the callers on the line right now have previously spoken.
Okay. In that case, I think we can move on. In that case, I think we can move on then to resolutions. Kathy, do you have resolutions offered?
I do, starting with Resolution 202292. It's approval of the warrant. The 2021 claims total $667,102.56. The 2022 claims total $913,627.51. And the utility warrant totals $32,529.10.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 202293 is to appoint the East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue members for 2022. I just want to say that these folks, we appreciate their service to our community. They are always on call responding to water emergencies 24 hours a day, 365 days a year since 2003.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
94 is to authorize an agreement with Tyler Technologies for 2022, and this is to provide licensing and support services to support the town's finance, accounting, and internal audit, human resources, and purchasing offices at a cost not to exceed $118,236.79.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
95 is to execute an agreement with Harris Govern for 2022, and this is for software licensing, support, and maintenance of the town's land management software, and the total cost is $121,848.81.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
96 is to accept the proposal of Edmunds GovTech, and this is for the Town Clerk Licensing System Software. It's support and maintenance at a cost not to exceed $2,800 for 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
I'd like to offer Resolution 202297. This is for Lilac 45, Jezebel 21, and Mayday 68 LLCs. This is to schedule a public hearing for CPF Project Plan Edition. These properties have tax map IDs 300-159-2-1.3, 1.4, 1.5, 1.6, 2, 4.1, and 5. These properties are located on Cedar Street, excuse me, and this is going to be for January 20th at 2:00 PM with a public hearing.
I have 11:00 AM.
So I apologize, 11:00 AM.
On Thursday.
On Thursday, January 20th, 11:00 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
202298 is for Lilac 45, Jezebel 21, and Mayday 68 LLCs. This is to schedule a public hearing for CPF acquisition. Again, the purported owners are Lilac 45 LLC, Jezebel 21 LLC, and Mayday 68 LLC, located at 186, 190, 192, 194, 196, 198, in a 5.18 reserve area on Cedar Street, East Hampton. Purported purchase price is $10 million. The public hearing will be held on January 20th, 2022, at 11:00 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 202299 is for Latchefsky. To schedule a public hearing for a CPF Project Plan Edition, tax map 300-23-2-31. This property is at 61 Isle White Road. It's .74 acres. The public hearing will be held on January 20th, 2022, at 11:00 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2022100 is Latchefsky. Schedule a public hearing for a CPF acquisition. Purported owner is Alex Latchefsky at 61 Isle White Road Springs, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-23-2-31 at 61 Isle White Road. Purported purchase price is $1.285 million. Preservation acquisition is for open space. The public hearing is to be held on January 20th, 2022, at 11:00 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
101 is a budget modification for Fort Hill Cemetery, taking funding from landscaping, general repairs, printing, and postage, and putting into the maintenance line for a total of $1,600.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
102 is authorize a payment to Outback Portable Toilets for a 2020 invoice in the amount of $100.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
2022103 is Davida. This is to offer a resolution for the acquisition to amend the management stewardship plan 2021 for the property of Steven and Alina Davida at 495 East Lake Drive, Montauk, tax map 300-6-2, 11 and 29. The public hearing was held on December 16th, 2021. Purchase price is for $2,495,000. It is for open space preservation, and that's what I'm offering.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I have a quick question before I vote. Just quickly, I watched this hearing on LTV, and I'm prepared to vote on it.
This is, this is for an acquisition hearing, Kate.
Okay.
Sure. If you feel comfortable, up to you.
I feel comfortable voting on it. Yeah, so I vote aye.
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 Thank you.
Resolution 2022104 is recyclables to be separated by commercial carters. It's resolved that the Town Clerk is hereby directed to publish in the January 13th, 2022 edition of the East Hampton Star, the attached notice of a list designated recyclables that must be separated from other solid waste prior to a commercial hauler's delivery of said designated recyclables and solid waste at the town's recycling center. And be it resolved that the Town Clerk is directed to post the attached notice on the Town Clerk's official bulletin board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2022105 is 679 Acabonic LLC, grant of scenic and conservation easement. This is to schedule a public hearing and a notice of public hearing. This would be on Thursday, January 20th at 11:00 AM. It is, again, the Town Board is the reviewing agency. You should have received from Christina the documents today that show the scenic and conservation easement that is being directed and that will be part of a public hearing on the 20th. Anybody not receive it? I just want to make sure everybody got it.
Got it. So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2022106 is community development block grant budget modifications. There remains in budget line funds which need to be allocated to other accounts, whereas two community development projects require additional funding to complete as the bids came in over budget, and the town may not modify the budget for community development without first allowing the public to provide their input. Pursuant to that, they did solicit public input on the proposed budget modifications, and there was no public comment. So this is how we are going to redirect the money. From year 2017, Housing Authority Generator had $281.76. That's going to be moved to Windmill Village 2 Bollards. And Wellbone Wood Sidewalks, I'm sorry, Wellbone Sidewalks had $585 left over. That will also be directed to Windmill Village 2 Bollards. Windmill Village Cabinets at $1,203.88 are also being directed to the Windmill Village 2 Bollards at $1,203.88. And Wellbone Village Cabinets of $6,029.36 is to remove, being moved to remove architectural barriers in the amount of $6,029.36. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Kate?
Yes, my first resolution is 2022107. This is to amend the resolution for the 2022, I don't know what 72 is, CAC members. This is to add Jess Frost as a member for the calendar year 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Next is 2022108, and this is to authorize a contract for professional service at the East Hampton Justice Court. And the Computer Professionals, the name of the company is Computer Professionals, has submitted a proposal for 2022, and this will, with options for renewable, mutual consent for computer maintenance services, and this will be for a cost of $2,500 with additional label to be billed at a rate of $65 an hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
Resolution 2022109 is to resolve that Kaplan-Cursh-Rockwell 2021 cap increase, and this will increase fees, which is required to represent the town in aviation matters. And it says it desires to continue them for the calendar year 2021. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the increase in caps shall be at $6,000, constituting a total of $31,000 to be sent on legal services provided by Kaplan.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry.
The next one is 2022110, or 110, and that's to increase the cap for Regano LLC as environmental council. And this cap increase, the original resolution was to cap fees at $30,000, and this is to increase the cap on expenditures now needed as matters are still pending regarding the East Hampton Airport, and this increases the cap of the outside professional Regano in the amount not to exceed $95,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 2022111 is training for Lieutenant Powers and Sergeant Alversa. This is to attend a mass casualty response training sponsored by FBI Leadership Series, and that is for January 11th and January 12th, 2022, and this will cover registration fees not to exceed $650.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 2022112 is to authorize maintenance agreement in East Hampton Police Department for 2022, and that is the proposal for total technology solutions for maintenance of the police department computer servers at annual cost of $22,750 for term commencing in 1/1/22 through 12/31/22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 113 is authorize renewal agreement for TriVeron-Tri-Tech 2022. Resolve that the software company will provide support services for a term from 11/15/20 through 21, I'm sorry, for 11/15/2021 through 11/14/2022 for total cost $59,912.64.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 114 is to accept additional funds Wayne Scott Commercial Center, this is with regards to the Wayne Scott Commercial Center subdivision application. The applicant is providing these funds, the amount of $10,000, the payment of professional fees associated with the review of environmental impact statement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 115 is authorize agreement with Novatime Software 2022, and this is to pay Andrews Technology HMS Incorporated some $44,290 for licensing and maintenance support for fiscal year 2022 commencing February 1st, 2022, ending January 31st, 2023, to support the finance office, time and attendance functions, and that'll be paid out of various budget lines.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 116 is to increase the cap for Dan Redsoe, Whitman, Osterman, Hanna LLP Council in the sand highway proceedings, and that is to resolve that we should be increasing the cap, $75,000, constituting a total of $115,000 for 2021 calendar year.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 2022117 is to increase the cap for Whitman, Osterman, Hanna LLP, Sea View at Amagansett LLP. Let's see, whereas the original was not to exceed $25,000, this is to increase those amounts not to exceed $165,000 in that ongoing phase.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 2022118 is to increase the cap for the law offices of Vince Tumi General Matters for 2021, and that is resolved that the cap shall be increased by $20,000 for a new total not to exceed $180,000 for calendar.
Can I just ask, is there a typo here? Because the first resolve says 20,000, but then 15,000 is spelled out.
John, do you have any insight on that?
I don't, but if you want to skip this one and come back, I can check on it, on out.
So let's set that aside for the time being.
All right.
Make sure we have the right amount there. I think it's probably the 20,000, but you'll let us know. Resolution 2022119 is a budget modification for 2021 for the town attorney, and this is moving $904 for office expense to online law services in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. 120 is the 2021 budget modification and cap increase for town attorney that is moving from land acquisitions in the amount of $45,000 to outside professional in the same amount. I'm sorry, 4,500.
100, right, okay.
4,500 to outside professional in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. That's great. Sylvia just saved us a lot of money. Resolution 121 is budget modification for the police department, and that is moving from office expense in the amount of $8,000 to uniform allowance in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 122 is accept proposal Springs Library Roof Construction Administration Inspection for L.K. McLean Associates in the amount of $4,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 123 is amend Resolution 20211311, and that's reauthorize resolutions authorizing NYMRA deductible payments, and that is, let's see, resolve that the town will increase unappropriated unreserved surplus in the amount of $57,671 and increase insurance in the amount, which is the same, $57,671.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 124 is to amend 202944, pay NYMRA deductible, that's for Corelli, and that's resolved that, let's see, the town hereby agrees to pay NYMRA for the amount of $6,997 in that matter.
And 36 cents. Second.
36 cents. Now you just cost us money.
Sorry.
Just by way of explanation for you, though, those two resolutions, the second one is contained within the first one. The first round of attempts to get this paid was rejected in whole, even though the three amounts are correct. So just to be safe, we're doing a resolution that has all four in them and the one resolution that has the correction in it, because I'm not really sure why the three didn't go through, but I'm sure there's a reason for it. So I just wanted to have two correct resolutions that were hopefully in order so that gets paid. And if you want to go back to the...
We didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It'll be a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. And John, what was the correct amount?
The Tumi one is you are correct. It is $20,000.
Okay. So...
Second is amended.
Second is amended.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass and carry. Resolution 2022125 is approve agreement for Nearmap US Incorporated, GIS aerial imagery subscription service. subscription service, and that is for the amount not to exceed $11,550 for 12-month subscription beginning January 29th, 2022. And do I have a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pass and carry. I have two additional resolutions. Resolution ID 27232 is pay upon termination for employee Nisselen Deal, and that includes vacation time in the amount of $7,586.81, readjustment in the amount of minus 26 cents for a total of $7,586.55.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Resolution ID 27233 is pay out upon termination of employee Jean Hudson, and there is no outstanding accruals to be paid out.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Do we have any other resolutions to offer?
I do not.
I'll entertain a motion to go into exec session.
Motion to go into exec for personnel and decisive council. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
What time? It's 3:31.
If we go directly into exec, I'll be sending around the link. We have an interview. So be well, everyone, stay safe, be careful out there. All the time is everywhere.